Meeting, today is February thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. Sheriff, will you lead us in the place, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business this evening is area plan.
We have one request for an extension of surety. It's on the replat of lot seventy-six Lexington subdivision by First Federal Savings Bank by Michael Carter, S C P. Holding a letter of credit, five thousand dollars for street and drainage construction. They're asking for a one-year extension at the same amount. They've had five years. This expires three twenty-seven of twenty-three.
Bobby?
Dollar amount sufficient. I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
All second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries two zero.
We have a request for reduction of surety. Woodfield subdivision, section three. Woodfield Development LLC by Steve Blankenberger, the member. We're holding three thousand three hundred for sidewalk construction, and they're requesting a modification from the subdivision control ordinance to have one-year extension with a reduction to two thousand six hundred and fifty. They've had the letter of credit for fifteen years and three months, and this letter expires March fourth of twenty-three.
Bobby, any comments?
The dollar amount is sufficient.
Thank you.
Make a motion to approve.
I will second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries two zero.
Sidewalk acknowledgement, Woodfield subdivision, section two. Woodfield Development LLC by Steve Blankenberger, owner. Woodland Springs Drive at two thousand five hundred and fifty-nine lineal feet. Woodfield Drive at two thousand one hundred and forty-four lineal feet. Deer Trail Court, one thousand thirty-four lineal feet. Jenwood Court at eight hundred and fifty-nine lineal feet. Lakefield Drive at two hundred and fifty-three lineal feet. We are currently holding one thousand eight hundred and fifteen and fifty cents. They've had sixteen years and eight months. This expires March fourth of twenty-three, and everything is in order.
Sidewalks have been constructed to the approved plan, recommend acknowledgement.
Make a motion to approve.
And I will second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries two zero.
We have street construction plans. Primary plat, P P twenty-three oh one, Adams Creek number three. Petitioner and owners Cory Allen King and Laura Zankovich King. Approximately nine point seven acres on the south side of Edwards Road, approximately fifty feet east of the intersection of Edwards Road and Spring Lake Drive. Being lot three and Adams Creek number two, recorded in document two thousand sixteen R zero zero three nine six four, Boone Township thirty-five and eight. It was advertised in the standard on February second of twenty twenty-three. They're requesting no improvements to Edwards Road.
Recommend approval.
Motion to approve.
I'll second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries two zero.
And that's all we have for tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bobby.
Okay, we're gonna shuffle the agenda here for just a bit and have the informational items for discussion moved up. Tony, you wanna come up and give us your presentation regarding EMS?
Thank you, Mr. President. Tony O'Neill with Warwick EMS. For the sake of time, I won't read every line item on what we've done in twenty twenty-two, but I did wanna just do a little bit of a recap for Warwick EMS. We finished twenty twenty-two with about seven thousand four hundred and thirty-six runs total for the year for the EMS service. We conducted multiple training sessions with fire departments and the sheriff's office regarding CPR and Narcan. We provided ambulance coverage for multiple sporting events, school events, and the four-H fair. We had fifty-eight students ride along with us this year for educational purposes. We expanded our support, peer support team through our EMS service, and we are currently working with the new career, Warwick County Career Tech School on developing an EMS service, our E M T class for that, and we'll be partnering with them and helping them put that on for the year.
So for high school-age kids initially?
Yes, for high school-age kids.
And will that be expanded at any point?
I hope so, but to start off, we're going with the high schools, and I think we've got thirteen, thirteen to sixteen kids signed up next year for it already, so it's a good thing, so. I also wanted to give the commissioners an update on the six truck and the EMS station for Libbert Road. I was out there today and met with project manager. He's still saying that March first, the EMS station will be completed and ready to open. We will have our new truck the first week of March, so we are going to go live with the six truck on March first, and it will go as a twenty-four-hour truck. And if there's some reason we can't get in there, in the new station, we'll work through the Paradise Station for a day or two until we can, to get into the station full-time. But we, we plan on having the truck fully in service and ready to go.
Good to know.
Any questions on anything?
Do not.
All right, thank you all.
Thanks, Tony.
All right, Mike, you're next.
All right. Can I approach? Just wanna give you guys a skip of this. This is just some training stuff that I hand out to business owners or managers on some stuff that's not obvious on my reports. If you don't mind, I just wanna look back just a second. On one of those, I have legal-for-trade scales, and there are several businesses in the county operating without legal-for-trade scales, and I think I've about got everybody on the same page, but Capital Coins and Most Farmers Markets weren't. Mulberry Jeans, Hutchinson's Jewelers, Night Exchange, Remedy, Aching Acres, and Old Fashioned Butcher Shop were some of them that were operating without legal-for-trade scales. I had a few more, but they decided they would quit selling legal-for-trade, and they would just start selling by the plate or just by appearance or something to that effect, so. And there are several fuel stations here in the county that have upgraded their fuel dispensers with new fuel dispensers, and those are just all of them here in Boonville. Casey's, Bo Circle K's, Bo Chuckles, Hudson Chandler, the Hudson Elberfeld, Fast Break in Newburgh, Casey's in Newburgh, Philip sixty-six on Stacer Road, and Philip sixty-six on one sixty-two in Newburgh, and Sunrise Food Mart in Newburgh. All of them got new fuel dispensers, which some of that I can take credit for, some of it, because they were just so bad that, you know, they just had to do it. But in the last quarter, I've worked with Certus, it's a service company that do the tire air machines, and they can adjust the timers. Some of the timers here were as much as twenty percent off in, in Boonville. I worked with them in the last quarter, and I did the new fuel station, the Shams over on Rosebud Lane. They're new in the last quarter. I had eleven rejections there. Some of them were so bad, I red-tagged three nozzles because they were so short. My five-gallon prover, I couldn't even read it in it. It was so far down inside the prover that I couldn't read it, so I would guess they were probably almost a gallon short. But I red-tagged those, and I, the store bagged off another one where I couldn't put five gallons in my prover. It just overflowed at four point eight gallons that was overflowing the top, and anyway...
So like, excuse me, let me interrupt you there. So when you, when you find something like this, do you go back, how often or when do you go back and circle around to make sure those have been corrected?
I gave them fourteen days to get that corrected. This was on December second. I was back on the sixteenth, I believe, is what it was, and I'd rechecked. Then the service company didn't have all the issues taken care of. They had put, take my red tags off of everything and placed everything back in service, and I went back and re-red tagged them, so it's...
That's a problem.
It was a little frustrating. I mean, I wanna give them the benefit of the doubt, you know, and just, but I do have a fine ordinance. If it gets to a point where I have to, then I will use it, but...
I think you need to use it when you're ripping people off.
Yeah.
I know I have behavioral tolerance for it, and I think this man, to my left, is too...
I do, too. Some of that was, they actually did get the one that I red-tagged repaired, but the ones that were giving fuel away, they didn't get them corrected, so. I mean, it's kinda hard to find somebody for giving stuff away. There's really no law against giving stuff away, so they can do that, but it's pretty sad, you know?
Those, those are the ones I'm not worried about, is the one that's...
Yeah, right, right.
I'd like to know where they are.
Right. But I've done some package auditing, and basically, I think I gave, I don't know for sure what I did give you. I gave you legal-for-trade and, and tear weights. I gave you how to determine tear weights. I've done some package auditing, and it's very evident that there are a lot of businesses that don't understand tear weights, that they're, if they're putting ham salad in a container, they can't sell the container. They can only sell the ham salad, and that's, that's what I'm trying to do with that. I'm just trying to educate them. I don't wanna, I don't wanna beat them up over it, but I, if I continue to find problems, then I'll re-evaluate that.
Mike, are there written notices that are given to these violations as well?
Yes, yes. I have, like, here's my report form, and it has violation column over here, and it's all listed, and I'll put the violations, like here is A, and that is the dispenser's out of acceptable tolerance, so they get that. But whenever, what I wanna get into is places like Walmart. I go in there, and I have so many issues, and they just, they either fall on deaf ears or I'm reporting them to a supervisor who doesn't pass that information on, or for whatever reason, and I'll go back and, and maybe just one or two things have been corrected, and I end up making four and five trips back before they can get everything. That's, I wrote them a warning ticket out here at this Boonville Walmart, and it totaled eight hundred dollars because they just kept, they just had so much stuff that they weren't correcting, and, but I got the manager that I gave the warning ticket to, to sign that, and then when I went back to check on it, I talked to another manager, and he said, "Well, I didn't know anything about it." So I got the warning ticket, and I said, "Here's your manager that signed it," so they're, hopefully, they're getting on the same page. It's just, I don't know, I hate to just be, you know, just go in there like I'm gung-ho, but...
Mike, I, I know that since you've been with us as our, as our Wachen Majors Inspector, you've found a lot of things that have been corrected, lots of things to be corrected. I don't know that there's any value of the dollar that, that we've been able to add up and accumulate. Do you have any idea how, how many, how many dollars you've saved the taxpayers of Warwick County?
I, I really don't. I've saved business owners probably as much as I have taxpayers. I mean, business owners that are just giving stuff away. I mean, if I go in and...
I just think about it in terms, I'm looking at your, your graph here, you know, everybody stakes twelve dollars a pound.
Right.
If it's that, and if it's twenty percent off, that's, you know, twenty-five cents times however many steaks are sold in a day.
Right.
It adds up quickly.
It does add up, but I, I don't really have a dollar amount for you, but...
Yeah.
So in the last quarter, I've done the Walgreens in Newburgh and the C V S in Newburgh. I had no issues. I did the Night Exchange, the end, or the beginning of this quarter, no issues there. Agner's Hardware had no issues. Beehive Printing had no issues. Save You More, I had no issues with the scales. I think I had some package audit issues, but they weren't severe enough to, I just talked to the managers and just gave them the training information and told them I would be back and do a follow-up. I didn't give them a specific time. But Tractor Supply here in town, I did theirs. They had a scale missing. I rejected the scale they had missing for the simple fact that they stick these scales up on a shelf somewhere, and they don't use them, and then they bring them back out, and they're not certified anymore, and then they stick them out on the counter and start using them, because I, I tell them when I'm there, "Look, I have to check it, or you can't use it at all," so that's why I rejected that. And I had that same issue at, at the Pet Food Center in Newburgh, where every time I'd go, they have old scales, and I allowed the old scale to grandfather in because it was thirty-year-old scale. And then the next year I went, they had the same thirty-year-old scale with a different serial number, and then the next year, a different serial number. And I'm like, I can't, I, I just revoked the grandfather clause and said, "Look, get a new scale. You're just, you're gonna have to replace it," and that I gave them, I think, until March twentieth or something like that to get a new scale, because supply chain issues are a problem for everybody. But I checked the Boonville Walmart here in town, I went through some of that. I checked the pharmacy at the Walmart, I had no issues there. Circle S in Chandler has a scale, I checked it, I had no issues. Boonville High School, they're very hard to contact. I just, it's really hard to get in there. Usually, I like to check the high school wrestling scales before the wrestling season starts, but they're just hard to contact at, at the Boonville High School, but I did get that done. Yeah, Wildboar Mine in Linville, they have a truck scale and a belt scale. I did those. Liberty Mine in Boonville reopened. They have a truck scale and a belt scale. They wanted me to come out and certify the belt scale off of their truck scale. I asked them when their truck scale had been done. They said it hadn't been done in a few weeks, and I said, "Well, it has to be done twenty-four hours before the belt scale test." I mean, because a truck scale can get off anytime, so. Anyway, they did that. They came back out, redid the belt scale and, or the truck scale and the belt scale. I did the Old Fashioned Butcher Shop. I rejected two scales at the Old Fashioned Butcher Shop, but they were in their customers' favor by one hundredth of a pound, up to thirty pounds, so I didn't, no action was taken. They can use them if they wanna, they don't use them that high anyway. I mean, five pounds or less, and if five pounds or less, they were accurate, but on thirty-pound scales, I have to test them to capacity. That's just the way handbook forty-four is wrote, so I test them to capacity. I did Maulers in Newburgh, three truck scales, they were no issues there. Shom Jewelers in Newburgh, no issues. Beautiful Edibles in Newburgh, no issues. And that's pretty much what I've done this quarter. I think I did the timer at Huck's and Chandler, and I did timers with, at all the Casey's and Chuckles here in Boonville. I checked that timer.
Is there a, in particular industry that you find most of the years?
Oh, probably in the supermarkets would be the biggest problem.
Gotcha.
I mean, even at the coal mine, I had, they came in, they had just done the truck scale, just did it a couple of weeks before. I rejected as-found test, they readjusted it. Whenever they're gonna calibrate a scale off of another scale, it has to meet a different tolerance than a normal tolerance, so I rejected it. They got it within acceptance tolerance, which is what they're required to be within. Maintenance tolerance is a tolerance where I just go by and do inspections, and they get a little bigger tolerance, half of that for the acceptance tolerance, but usually, if they're gonna calibrate another scale, zero tolerance is best, and I think the belt scale, we did six tests. They have to have two consecutive tests within tolerance, within a quarter of a percent. The first four were out of tolerance, so they were rejected, so. And that's what my monthly report will show, that there was four rejections and two approved belt scales.
I think, Mike, it sounds to me like you are basically Warwick County's own Consumer Protection Agency.
Well, I try. Equity in the marketplace means a lot to me, it really does.
I know how passionate you are about your job.
I take a lot of pride in that.
Michael, how many, how many pieces, meaning scales, measuring apparatuses, do you think you inspect or out there that you have to inspect? Couple thousand, more than that?
Scales, gas pumps, everything.
All measuring devices.
No, there's a couple thousand.
Thousand.
And you have to realize, whenever I check fuel dispensers, I do a fast test and a slow test, because I wanna check the meter at full speed, and then I wanna slow down and check it at a slower speed, because when a meter starts to fail at the slower speeds they get off, and I don't know if you saw it, but on the news here, it's been several months ago, they suggested pumping at a slow speed, so, yeah, but that's always been a thing even before that, but, yeah. Older fuel dispensers, you'll see, you'll find issues a lot of times with the slow tests, and a lot of my rejections are on slow tests.
Do you ever check the center point gas meters? Oh, wait a minute, did I?
I wished I could. I wished I could.
Mike, thank, thank you for the report. We appreciate what you do.
Thanks, sir.
I'm gonna go, thanks.
Okay, next order of business is the approval of minutes from the January twenty-third, twenty twenty-three meeting.
Make a motion to approve?
I have a motion to approve, all second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries two zero. Next order of business, tabled appointments from, our twenty twenty-three appointments in our, for the Health Board and for the TRICAP Board. Heather, help me out here, please.
Okay, so for the Health Board, that Joy Brown was one that was under discussion that we tabled for the last couple of meetings.
Okay.
But I think you all have had an opportunity to discuss that appointment with Erin.
Correct.
I make a motion to approve Joy Brown for the appointment for her Health Board.
I'll second that, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries two zero.
Okay, and then for the TRICAP Board, I think our records were just a little different than, maybe a couple of the transpose numbers. I got a contact from the TRICAP folks and asked for the letter for Sherri Sherman's reappointment, and that wasn't the date we had, so we're gonna get, get in line with what they had on the last letter they received from Roger by appointing her.
This is now officially a twenty twenty-three appointment?
Correct.
For Sherri Sherman. I'll make that motion.
So do we, as a motion, or to get on the same, okay?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I make that motion to correct the twenty twenty-three TRICAP Board appointment of Sherri Sherman.
I'll second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries two zero. Thank you.
Okay, next, we have the consent agenda, and on the consent agenda, we have the County Auditor Claims voucher report dates one twenty-five twenty-three through two fourteen twenty-three, payroll voucher dates of one twenty-seven twenty-three and two ten twenty-three, the approval of the Supercuts estimate for mowing around the retention basin at Bell and Van, the surplus declaration of Sheriff's Department vehicles. There are a total of five vehicles, a twenty fourteen Charger, VIN number ending three five one one five, a twenty fourteen Charger, VIN number ending five zero seven four three, a twenty sixteen Charger, VIN number ending zero five one one three, a twenty nineteen Ram, VIN number ending seven seven four eight two, and another twenty nineteen Ram, VIN ending seven seven four eight one. We also have the Scales Lake Weed and Algae Treatment Contract with Aquatic Control, the Health Department Independent Contractor Agreement with Dr. Maltbein, the Health Department Call Out and Overtime Compensation S O P, the Highway Department Use of P T O S O P, and the Approval of the Parking Lot and Restroom Use for the Monarchs Annual Car Show, which is, will be held on May thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, and the Treasurer's Monthly Report for month ending December twenty twenty-two.
Okay, thank you all. I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. President, I do have a question. The Scales Lake Weed and Algae Treatment, is that a different contract that was already discussed at a previous meeting?
It actually was pulled off the agenda at the previous meeting, so it was the same one that's been reviewed. We just pulled it until we have some questions answered.
Okay, okay.
So you've looked at that contract?
I had looked at it previously.
Yes.
So no changes in the...
No.
And then the two SOPs, I've not had time to look at those, just to compare those with the existing policy that did exist previously with the Highway Department. Of course, the Health Department would be a new one, but I have not reviewed those.
So this be an approval of the consent agenda pending, or do you just want us to pull those out?
You can do it either way. If you'd like, we can review it. If there's any language cleanup, just take care of that, particularly with Highway Department, that we're just switching from overtime to P T O, but when we made that switch previously, there were other little fixes and changes and tweaks that were needed to be made.
Yeah, I think they're very, very carbon copyish, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, basically, we took the words vacation and sick and changed them to P T O, and then we added some things as far as one day at a time needs previous workday before it can be approved. They need to request it the previous workday if they're gonna ask for one day at a time. Two days or more needs, I think, was it three days?
Mm-hmm.
A notice and anything above that was...
A notice and alert has arrived.
So I'll make, I'll make the motion to, to approve based, if legal counsel can take a look at items F and G and just make sure they're all in order, but I make a motion to approve the consented agenda with that.
Very good. I will second that motion, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries two zero. That all?
Yes, as long as I think you do.
Next order of business is County Attorney.
Mr. President, first item on the agenda is Libbert Road EMS lease. We have that in front of you, and it's a lease agreement between the Ohio Township trustee and the Board of Commissioners of Warwick County, Indiana. This is almost identical to the lease agreement that currently exists with Ohio Township for the Paradise Fire Station. This is allowing the county to lease a portion of the fire station that's being built, almost completed, on Libbert Road, and EMS, sixteen, that was referenced earlier in this meeting, is going to be housed at that Libbert Station. This is a ten-year lease term, and it has the same lease amount as previous, as Paradise Station, at forty-five hundred dollars, paid two times a year. The first year here, twenty twenty-three, would be a prorated amount actually for the first payment. Instead of forty-five hundred, it would be thirty-three seventy-five, since we would not be starting that use until March one of this year. Of course, there's language in here for insurance requirements, you know, various other indemnification clauses that existed in the previous or the other lease as well. This has been reviewed by Ohio Township's counsel, and all parties are in agreement as to the language. Attached is exhibit, attached will be in exhibit A, and it just is a drawing map that shows which portion of the building is being leased by the, by the county. It's approximately nineteen hundred forty-five square feet of their building space.
Outstanding, so I think Dan's made the point before, that by doing this agreement with Ohio Township and residing in the existing building saves us a significant amount of money. I think I did a quick calculation at one point, and if we were to build a building, it would take us probably eighty years to break even with this agreement, so it's a good deal. Anything else you'd like to add on that?
No, yeah, if we had to build a standalone building with what they're currently housed in, like kind, it would probably be in the two million-plus-dollar range, so it's something that we really don't have to maintain. The township's willing to do it, and last time I checked, you couldn't even get a one-bedroom apartment for seven hundred and fifty dollars a month, so I think it's a pretty fair deal for the taxpayers. It gives the township a little bit of money to help maintain that building, so I'm, I'm pretty happy with it.
State a motion. State a motion for that?
I make a motion to approve the lease agreement with Ohio Township.
And I will second that, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries two zero.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is an interlocal agreement between Ohio Township and the Board of Commissioners. This is for the same building, for the EMS to be housed in, and this is an agreement for the county. The township, of course, has already been constructing this building and has incurred costs in the construction of that building, and this is an interlocal agreement that provides that the county will... And this is an interlocal agreement that provides that the county will reimburse the Ohio Township trustee for the costs and expenses of the build-out inside the leased space. So, the walls, the separate heating and air, the furniture, those sorts of things. And this is a total reimbursement of two-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand-five-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars, which would be the entirety of the costs associated with the build-out for location for the EMS truck to be housed, and, and the EMS employees to sleep and stay while they're waiting on runs.
Very good. Any questions?
No, again, part of that statement kind of applies to this. If we had to go out and construct a building, we're looking not only at build-out, but big construction costs.
Right. I'm good with it, if you're good with it.
I'm good with it. Make a motion to approve the interlocal between Ohio Township and the county.
I will second that motion, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries two zero.
Thank you. The third item on the agenda is twenty-twenty-three EREP Service Agreement that has been provided previously, but you have a copy here for signature. But the same agreement that has been in existence for quite some time with EREP. It's two forty-five-thousand-dollar installments per year, each, for this year, that provides for various services that EREP provides the county, as well as position on the board as well. I don't know if that is something that is.
Do we have folks here from?
There she is.
Hello.
Hi, Jen. Go ahead.
Hi, Commissioners. Jenna Rickart with Evansville Regional Economic Partnership. This is the same agreement we had as last year, and this is for twenty-twenty-three. And so, I think as you guys are aware, we work closely with Steve and Debbie, and of course, directly with you all, to ensure a good economic development for the region. And we will continue to work on things such as community and economic development. We have several events through our chamber side of the organization, and we'll continue to work on things like Ready. And we are anticipating and gearing up for a potential Ready two-point-oh. So, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
I don't. So, let me see this. Jen, I apologize here. I haven't had a chance to look at this really at all. Kind of reviewing an email here. Is there any, any urgency to this right now? I know it's in front of us. I haven't had a chance to look at this.
No, no, you can absolutely take your time. I'm happy. I'm planning on being here regularly, and then someone from our team, if I'm not, is hopeful to be at meetings regularly. So, if you have upcoming questions, you're more than happy to reach out directly to me, or I do plan on being at the next meeting.
When's your next meeting?
Twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh. I've got a busy week this week, but I'd like to try and get together and connect with you next week, maybe.
Absolutely.
And talk a little bit. If there's no urgency, I'd like to maybe consider tabling it for a couple of weeks.
So, make a motion to table to our February twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three meeting.
You have any questions for us?
Nope, sure don't. Thank you, appreciate it.
I'll second that, and all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries two zero.
Mr. President, I do have one other item, just to bring to your attention. It does not be handled today, but there are three contracts that have been provided there with environmental management consultants. There are contracts that are for providing services to the Pelzer Road landfill, number two, providing services for methane monitoring, for inspection, and for groundwater sampling. Those are contracts, I think, that were ones that are renewed every year, and that were perhaps sent previously, but have been perhaps missed in transition between, from Roger to Heather. And so, there's one contract for methane monitoring for forty-three-hundred dollars for the year. The landfill inspection and reporting is nineteen-fifty, one thousand nine-hundred-and-fifty a year, and the groundwater sampling contract is for sixteen-thousand-two-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars. Those are relatively short contracts and have not really changed from previous years. There's some terms, conditions attached, which provide for limitations of liability and indemnification, but those are, well, languages that.
Reason why one's quarterly, one's semi-annual, one's man-annual. Is that just already being a code, or?
I don't know why it's set up that way. These are, these are, these were provided to me, I think, a week or two ago, and I just wanted to bring those to your attention. You can review those, and they don't have to be decided necessarily today.
Bottom line is they're internal contracts.
Yes. These are all testing requirements that are required by IDEM every year.
Good with them. I just, I was thinking, you know, if there's any way to kind of make them more efficient, but doesn't sound like there is.
But it's certainly something maybe Heather could reach out to environmental management consultants and ask about, can we get these all on the same pay schedule?
So, if they're required and they're the same as they are, have always been, I'm good with them. And we can work on that maybe over the course of the next year.
Absolutely.
What are your thoughts?
Yeah, but I agree. It's, I think it's opportunity to get, make it, clean it up, making it all do the same. And so, do we do these separate, or can we do these all together?
You can do one motion.
One motion. I make a motion to approve the three agreements in front of us for the landfill with environmental management consultants.
And I will second the motion, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Two zero.
Two zero. Correct. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I have for you today.
I know Bob's here with spirit.
All right. Next order of business is County Engineer, Highway Superintendent.
Thank you. The first item I have is in regards to the Telephone Road Right-Away Project. We're purchasing right away. Currently, there are seventy-nine parcels. I did check for you, Terry. And we are a little over halfway, but this is administrative recommendations for administrative settlement. The first one is parcel sixteen. Basically, there was a discussion with the, the offer was rejected, and the landowner came back with a nine-hundred-dollar increase, subject to the property initially was appraised with a partial basement, and they have a full basement, and the appraiser has reviewed and believes that this is warranted. So, I'd recommend approval of the new offer to settle the, the property at twenty-two-thousand-and-fifty dollars, which is an increase of nine-hundred dollars over the original appraised amount. Do you want to handle these together or separate?
I'd say separate, what do you think?
I would think separate.
Yeah. I make a motion to approve the nine-hundred increase, nine-hundred-dollar increase.
I'll second that, and that's with regard to parcel sixteen, correct?
Yes, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
My motion carries two zero.
The next one I have is for parcel fifty-seven. The owner rejected the initial offer and requested an additional six-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars for a fence relocation. The owner had provided an estimate for that fence relocation, and the difference was six-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars. So, the, we believe therefore it's best interest to settle this parcel for seventeen-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars, which is an increase of six-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars over the appraised amount. Recommend.
I make a motion to approve the six-hundred-and-eighty-seven-dollar increase for parcel number fifty-seven.
I'll second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries two zero.
The next item I have is in regards to parcel thirty-one, and this is a waiver partial mortgage release. I did send this to John Goth. He has reviewed it and recommended approval as well.
Yes, we did review that, and it's pretty standard when there's a mortgage on a property. Typically, the mortgage company needs to be contacted to get a release from that mortgage company. But on this particular property, I think the mortgage company is now defunct. So, there's gonna be very, it's gonna be very difficult to get a release from, from that company.
So, what are we just?
So, this, approving, just by motion, a waiving, needing to get that partial mortgage release.
Make a motion to approve the waiver for parcel thirty-one.
I'll second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries two zero.
The last item I have is the District One Highway Building Pay App number eleven for the January billing in the amount of thirty-one-thousand-one-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars and fifty-seven cents. This has been reviewed and approved by the architect.
What's the balance still hanging out there, Bobby?
The balance that we have on balance to finish is fifty-three-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventeen dollars and seventy-eight cents, and the retainage is ninety-one-thousand-eight-hundred-and-ninety-six dollars and eighty-five cents.
Make a motion to approve Pay App number eleven.
I'll second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries two zero.
That is all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next order of business is County Acquisition Administrator.
Sherri Severs, County Acquisition Administrator. The first thing on my business here is the Fire Protection Plan contract for twenty-twenty-three, which I presented at the last Commissioners' meeting that was tabled. The Commissioners may wish to have me seek new quotes on that. When I initially asked for quotes, I was unaware of Five Star, Five Star Security already covers our annual inspection of test of the fire alarm system. And this is one of the items that both companies included in their quotes. I've also done an inventory of the county offices, which I think Heather has passed those out to you, and I believe you have them in front of you, and wanted to know if it would make sense to include all of those properties in the county fire protection plan for twenty-twenty-three. I do apologize for the, the confusion. Obviously, it was an operator error on my part, as I was going off a previous bid that Joe had from the past. So, the first page lists county offices that we have, three of which, at the very bottom, are the landlord's responsibility, and they are currently taking care of the fire protection for those three offices. They're not owned by the county. And then the second page is the current services that we would need for the remaining Warwick County properties. And so, I'm asking the Commissioners for approval to, if, if they would consider denying the first two quotes that you had tabled, and then put it out for rebid for all of the properties, if you wish.
Do we want to have the contractor do the fire extinguishers, because that's literally just looking at the day code, my understanding?
Good inspection.
Yeah. Sorry, saying take that off or leave that on?
I, I think we should leave it on.
Leave it on, okay.
I think you'll find that that's a huge cost item.
Right.
Rather than dump that on them.
So, Sherri, back to the first page there. What is, what does the gray highlight mean?
Those are county offices that we have, but we don't own those properties. So, the landlords do take care of the fire protection in those buildings.
So, Sherri, you have our new south location, South Garage on here?
Yeah, Warwick County Highway Department New Burke Location. In, in, in that initial request for bids, we only had the top four locations.
So, Sherri, on Freeman Park. So, I guess why is, why is Freeman Park on this report? And why wouldn't that be part of, does the Scales Lake not have a?
I don't know, and, and that's what I'm relying on you for, because they are within the county. But I did talk with Joe Sheeter, and Tri-State Fire Protection does their inspection. However, they're not in contract with them, in the same situation on Scales Lake, per Audrey Phillips out there. I didn't know if that's something that we want to incorporate into the county fire protection plan, or do they need to stay separate?
So, one more time, clear up for me. What, what is the difference between the first page and the second page? Are all of, is all of both pages being bid out?
The difference between the first page and the second page is, the first page gives you all of the current Warwick County offices that I'm aware of, three at the bottom, which we don't own the buildings.
Right.
And the second page would list the ones that we do have ownership of, including the Parks Department, what services would be needed for those particular locations.
I don't see anything that I think is missing.
And I'm happy with each one of those locations. I have gone over the Historic Courthouse and the Judicial Center, but I'm happy to do walkthroughs, like with Jeremy Holder, of course, with Bobby, and, or Jack Barkley, whoever he'd like for me to, and then walkthroughs with Freeman Park, if you decide to go that way. Scales Lake, the Animal Control, and the Stormwater Building, to make sure that we have all services listed when we do put it out for quotes, so that everybody is comparing apples to apples.
Sherri, I'm assuming when you say Warwick County Highway Department, Boonville, that you're encompassing all the buildings on, at that location. And, and would that be, because you have Drug Court, but do we have Stormwater Building on there?
I put the Stormwater down at the bottom.
Oh.
And then the Animal Control.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
Yeah, I'm sorry, double-sided trying to save trees.
Put over.
Yeah, trying to save some trees.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, no, that's, that's what I was getting at, Animal Control, Stormwater.
But I just thought, if, if you're gonna have a, a county fire protection plan, it may be good to have the same provider, and maybe we could get a better rate, the more that, the more buildings that we're putting on that plan. Just wanted to bring it to your attention.
I like that methodology.
I do, too.
Commissioners, I think the table, the, the last bids were tabled in the last meeting, so you would need a motion to reject those bids and rebid it to encompass all the locations, if that's what you're wishing to do.
Okay.
You want that motion? I make a motion to reject the tabled bids for the fire protection contracts.
And to bid out for all the buildings?
Well, is that, we just need a motion to table, or we roll that other motion into this, or?
You wouldn't need a motion to bid, you, Sheriff would just do that, yeah.
Very good. And I'll second that, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries two zero.
Okay, and then. Okay, and then, Mr. Skinner, on the Parks Department, would that be a separate division on their own, or should I include that as well?
Ask the Parks Department if they wish to be included in that, but they imagine have their own line item for that already. You may know.
For Scales Lake and for Freeman Park, whatever is more affordable is best for the Parks Department.
Protects the buildings is what I said.
So include that?
Well, we wouldn't want to pay for it twice.
Okay.
But, so, yeah, get with Joe and whoever to, and make sure that they're not already under contract for a year. I know you said here that it's not.
Right.
Just verify that there's no annual contract that would need to be canceled or anything.
Okay, thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
In the second order of business I have is regarding, hold on just a second. Here we go. At the Commissioners' meeting on September twelve, pardon me, twenty twenty-two, the Warwick County Commissioners approved three hundred and fifty-six thousand, three hundred and sixty-one dollars and seventeen cents of ARPA funds for new flooring for the Warwick County Judicial Center. And in accordance with Public Works IC thirty-six, one twelve four, Public Works project that is estimated to be more than a hundred and fifty thousand, full specifications and bidding requirements were met. Invitation to bid was sent to three flooring companies, Benny's Flooring, Greer's Flooring America, and Sunrise Flooring. We received one bid from Greer's Flooring America in the amount of four hundred and sixty-five thousand, nine hundred dollars, which was over the ARPA-approved amount by a hundred and nine thousand, five hundred and thirty-eight dollars and twenty-eight cents, due to labor costs involved working after hours and on weekends, in order not to disrupt daily business for the Judicial Center is what, what raised that price. The Commissioners requested the bid, rejected the bid, asking that I widen the net of potential contractors to make sure we were getting more than one bid, for the Commissioners to compare pricing and ask for labor rates during normal business hours. So on the second invitation, I invited three bids from the following companies, and you all have those in front of you, Greer's Flooring America, Razor Flooring, Business Environments. The Commissioners, County Administrator, and the County Attorney have the bid register in front of you, and the four plans that are highlighted on the back with the areas that are receiving flooring and the form of proposal. We have only received one bid from the three that we invited, and that was from Greer's Flooring America, which I will open at this time. And we do have, we requested a required bid deposit bond, but we do have cashier's check for five hundred in the amount that we requested. And then on your second page is your form of proposal, and I'm going to go ahead and go through those figures right now, if you guys want to follow me in there. So, total square foot of carpeting, they've got thirty-two thousand, five hundred and forty-four square foot. Total square foot of luxury vinyl plank is three thousand, two hundred and fifty-nine square foot. Total lineral foot of coat base is six thousand, nine hundred. Total cost of materials, and we are sales tax exempt, of course, one thousand, or excuse me, one hundred and forty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars. Total cost of labor during normal business hours, a hundred and ninety-nine thousand, five hundred. We've asked them to give us a quote on additional ten boxes of carpet tile for replacement in the future. The total for that is two thousand dollars. We've asked them to give us additional costs for ten boxes of luxury vinyl plank, in the event we need that in the future for damaged, eight hundred and sixty dollars. Total job cost, three hundred and fifty-one thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars. And then I, what we did is we broke it down, doing after hours and weekends, so you can do a comparison that way. So your materials is going to stay the same at a hundred and forty-nine thousand, five hundred. Total cost of labor after hours and/or on weekends, three hundred and forty-two thousand, eight hundred dollars. The additional boxes of carpet tile will stay the same at two thousand. Additional cost of LVP, ten boxes, eight hundred and sixty, for a total job cost of four hundred and ninety-five thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars. An hourly rate per square foot, the Commissioners asked me to break it down, per square foot, hourly rate per square foot after hours and on weekends, ten dollars per square foot. All the paperwork seems to be in order, but I think that's something that the County Attorney would need to review.
Sure.
Sherry, did you have a conversation with department heads about doing this during, doing this during normal business hours?
Yes, and.
What was your feedback?
I, they're really, everybody has been very willing to work with us, and Heather, pulled Heather into that conversation. We had discussed maybe setting up a makeshift area downstairs in the basement, and putting some folding tables there, and having, like, they could be out of their office for, I don't know, I'm going to make, have to rely on the flooring contractor for probably about a week, so they would have a makeshift office. But then when we reached out to Guy, there could be some issues with internet connection in those areas. Sarah Redmond, very helpful, and she suggested that maybe she could possibly send some of her workers home with laptops to work when we get their office done. She said that she would be more than happy to make makeshift areas for people, and just have folding tables for people to work out of her office as well. The problem with putting them in any hallways, or even downstairs in the turkey room, is internet connection. There's no internet connection in the hallways, and just very limited in the turkey room, just those two computers in there.
Then we would potentially be looking at those little small pocket offices.
The attorney-client offices, because we've got those on first, oh no, excuse me, second and third floor. I don't know if we've got enough that we could utilize. What have we got? Maybe three on the first floor?
On the second floor.
Yeah, second floor.
Three that are usable on the second floor.
Yeah.
So we need to take this bid under consideration, then? What was the first number?
The first number, yes. Yeah, the first number was four hundred and sixty-five thousand, nine hundred dollars, which was a hundred and nine, five hundred and thirty-eight, and some change over what the Commissioners had approved for ARPA funds. If we go with normal business hours, three fifty-one, eight sixty, and ARPA funds that were approved were three fifty-six, three sixty-one, so we would be within our budget.
Do you feel with talking with all the department heads, we can get this accomplished during normal business hours?
The only one that I feel like we may have an issue with, and it's not the department head's fault, it's the Treasurer's Office because of taxes. They're busy with taxes in the spring, that we absolutely cannot disturb that office. There's a lot of money that, that gets thrown through there, and they're really busy. I'm wondering.
Can we do that after tax season? Why can't we do it after tax?
We could probably do it after tax season, but we'd have to get in and, you know, be very persistent about it, because as soon as spring tax season is over, then they've got a breather, but then falls on us before we know it. So we've just got a smaller window of time there. I think our biggest challenge is going to be the courtrooms, and working with court schedules, personally.
Especially with the noise of machines extracting the carpet.
What, what is the extraction? Is that all glued down? All glued down?
And it's glued down.
And do they take that up via power machine?
They take it up with a, a machine they call a Bronco, and it's, it's a huge scraper, usually you write on it, and it, I mean, it's powerful, and it's loud. And, and that could also create some issues during normal business hours, even if we're not working in the courts. It, it, it could potentially disrupt our courts because of it.
When they say normal business hours, is that county normal business hours, or?
Eight to four.
Business hours?
Eight to five, yeah.
And is, is that, to Andrew's point, is that, like, if we take off President's Day or something, or if we're closed for a holiday, is that a normal workday for you, or?
Not really, unless you want us to work that day, you know?
We're just gonna have to work around obstacles. There's gonna be obstacles regardless. That's, that's it, we gotta work around.
There was obstacles when we did this, but.
Yep.
Question?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Holidays is from April first to, say, July first.
Heather?
April one.
Eastern.
Two.
Yeah, I'm.
Not very many.
Maybe two, yeah. Yeah, we have Good Friday, Election Day, which we can't really do anything, because that's, and then Memorial Day, so we're, we're.
Andrew wants to make Father's Day a holiday.
There you go.
It's already a Sunday, you can take it.
And then I, I also have a question to Bill with Greer's Flooring. Bill, do you know the availability of product?
Not as right now. Last time I knew it was the stock, as of right now, I do not know.
Okay.
But it should not take more than two weeks to get here.
Okay.
Because it's so much carpet, and I'll make a special run of it.
Thank you.
I'm taking it under advisement.
If, if, if we take this under advisement, make sure all the I's are about T's crossed, then if it, if it all meets, then she can just contact, you know, she can just contact Greer's on her own.
You can approve it subject to council review.
Council review and. Is that what you want? So I make a motion to approve the Greer's Flooring proposal, and give the opportunity for legal counsel to look over, and Sherry, and, and just go on. This, this does fit in within the ARPA dollar budget, right?
Yeah, it's a little bit lower.
So, so you'd say means going with regular hours. I'll second the motion, all in favor.
Aye.
I motion carries two zero.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Andrew.
If you need any help with department heads and planning, just trying to think, organize them.
Okay. Once, once, if you guys go ahead and follow through, we get approval, then we'll, we'll start on that. Okay, thank you.
Is that all, Sherry? That's all you have? Thank you. Okay, next order of business is County Grants Development.
Debbie Benes-Stiersman, Grants Development Director. I have two items this evening. The first item is a contract between Warwick County and Right Stuff Software Corporation. The Commissioners approved previously fifty thousand dollars out of the ARPA county funds to do a timekeeping system for the county. This agreement is for thirty-six months. It includes two time clocks and three years of maintenance or hosting. It does not include the Sheriff's Department, correct? Okay. The installation and training is a one-time fee of twenty thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars, licensing and supports, one thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars. There are the Indiana payroll schedule and voucher, Indiana employer's service record, and Indiana employer's work period are all included in that amount of funding. The additional items are off-site hosting, a hundred dollars per month, server installation, oh no, that doesn't include, sorry, additional implementation phase, five thousand dollars, and the clock, time clocks themselves are twenty-five hundred, times two, which comes up, if I did this right, a total of forty thousand, four hundred and forty dollars.
That was a total of all those things you just.
That's what, yes. I don't know, it, it leaves a little bit of money if there's something else that has to be done of the, under the fifty thousand dollars.
Where are the time clocks?
One for the Highway Department and one for the Parks Department right now. Those are the two areas.
Highway South?
Well, we, we have enough funds if we wanted to purchase a third one. That wasn't in the thought process when we originally did this, but.
We would just need one when it's time.
One, yeah.
Later on, June or something.
So that's another twenty-five hundred dollars, but we have it.
It's a, it's a multi-level. I mean, it's a biometric, it's, can use a card, it's, you know.
So, so my question, so just help me clarify. So you said the forty thousand, four hundred and forty dollars?
Correct.
Is that, is that encompass the total cost for the thirty-six months?
Yes.
So that includes a hundred dollars per month for thirty-six months?
Correct.
Okay. Moving forward, you know, we're not going to have the ARPA money available, then how's this going to get budgeted? I, I know that's thirty-six months down the road, right? So what vision do we have? What, how's that going to be, is that going to be individuals, or is that going to be coming out of our budget, or what?
I would envision that coming along the same lines of, like, where LOAIS paid from. There is a budgeted line within the auditor's budget for the programming. It's actually shared by, and then we can work with Crystal to make sure that that is increased enough.
So it comes out of the auditor's budget?
Yes.
That's good. Why didn't he see the auditor? Kind of quiet today.
I believe this agreement has been reviewed by the legal counsel.
Yes.
Yes. You good with it? I make a motion to approve the Right Stuff Software and Hosting Agreement Time Keeping System.
I'll second the motion, all in favor.
Aye.
I motion carries two zero.
And the second item I have is a grant agreement between Warwick County and Youth First. The county previously approved a grant to Youth First from the ARPA Competitive Fund. They provide mental health services to local schools, and the hundred thousand dollars will be used for that purpose. This is just the agreement that confirms the obligation.
So we're approving the agreement?
Correct.
I make a motion to approve the ARPA competitive grant agreement with Youth First.
And I'll second, all in favor.
Aye.
I motion carries two zero.
Thank you very much. That's all of God.
Thank you, David. Good to see you.
All right. Any other business for the board?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second, all in favor.
Aye.
I motion carries two zero. My motion carries two zero.
I have ten.